All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started today. Tonight, I should say. So, welcome to our evening meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order and we'll get started. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. And we will get started with a moment of silence and then go to a pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next we will have a roll call.
I'm starting on the lower rostrum. Commissioner Lanier. Commissioner O'Connor. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Usasi.
Here.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. All right, next that will take us to public comments. And there are two opportunities for public comment tonight. One is related to items that we are going to be voting on tonight. So, a couple of rules for this. We ask you to come to the podium, say your name and city that you live in, and then state the item that you're referring to for this first period of public comment. And there's a limit of three minutes.
So, a very pleasant good evening, fellow veterans and citizens of Grand Rapids. This is the House of People. Watchdog Miller reporting. Going back to 1838, can anyone find the more corrupt GR mayor who never recuses herself?
Mr. Miller, what items are you speaking to?
All the confidence.
Well, you have to specifically say what item that you're speaking to.
Which ones do you have? Well, how many of anyone who's giving you campaign contributions?
What item are you talking about on the agenda that we're going to vote on?
We're on seven. 1, 2, 6, 10, and 11. Marijuana. Most of these citizens are south on the city. They could ease their situation by simply participating to an ex to Wyoming. Darryl Ross, 10. Fighting for marijuana and was on the school board forever and he never actually came out and criticized the racist rapid system or black routes for one thing. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And 14, never come downtown and seen overcrowding, criminal overcrowding on the rapid. We need double deckers, not smaller buses, man. 8, 3. Treasury report, there will be an impact on treasuries received. We see some 600,000 people are hurt by all the hysteria and on virus 19. And we have a barista economy here which you have cultivated in recent years. These people are going to be hurt. We're going to be seeing all sorts of evictions in the central area. And there's no emergency. If you just look over the facts every day, some 275,000 people die around the world of whatever. So, unless that's addressed, I would hope by my legal staff, my attorney, there is no emergency. Situation's ridiculous. And once again, not only are our city buses don't come here, but now it's an unwelcoming setup. 9A. There's apparently, there's no listing of whom you appointed under 9A in the last three weeks. 9B, 4. 11 grand for cops. We need more cops on the street, not in the Grand Plaza Hotel. Down 11 grand is a lot of doughnuts. Let's go to C1. Battle this forever. The Laker line, we better off of just building it. It's the construction union suburban construction buses. Union bus ordering you to put this in. But it cuts out first word stops, key stops at Collingdale and Oakley.
Mr. Miller, your time is up. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on items that we're voting on tonight? All right, I'm going to move us then to approval of minutes. And these are the minutes from February 25th. Can I get a motion?
Vote.
Support.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to...
Madam Mayor, just a quick question. I know we usually announce the translation services.
Oh, my goodness, thank you. Okay. My apologies. I need to get that on these agendas, so I don't always forget. I know, I'm sorry. So, yes, please come forward and provide some welcoming remarks. My apologies. Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi, we're here on behalf of the Hispanic Center. And we're going to be providing translations simultaneously. And I'll say the same thing in Spanish. Estamos aquí para proveer servicios en español para todas las personas de forma simultánea. Pueden vernos al salir acá. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications. And we have quite a few tonight.
Yes, communication received from Seeds of Promise expressing concerns regarding the proposed marijuana ordinance.
That's received and filed.
Communication received from Kirby Killingham Family Outreach Center expressing opposition to a dispensary opening at 1970 South Division.
That's received and filed.
Communication from Craig Noblyn regarding the resignation from the Board of Review.
That's referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Jesus Solis regarding the resignation from the Housing Appeals Board.
That's referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Eleanor Moreno regarding the resignation from the Urban Agricultural Committee.
That's referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from the Flourish Team encouraging the City Commission to stay committed to the initial timeline for adult use licensing.
That's received and filed.
Communication received from Leah Bailey, Chief Executive Officer for Flourish, expressing opposition to a delay in marijuana licenses.
That's received and filed.
Communications from several people today. And that's in the packet that I provided you to, part of that packet, to amend Michigan State law to allow drivers licenses for all.
That's received and filed.
Communication received from David M. Jerosik, East Town Community Association President with an overview of findings concerning color temperature preferences for neighborhood business district streetlights.
That's received and filed.
Communication received from Darryl Ross, 40 Acres Consulting urging the City Commission to adopt a resolution stating that delay will occur for no more than three months or until the Commission can develop an appropriate social equity plan for the adult use cannabis market in Grand Rapids.
That's received and filed.
Several communications, some, those are in your packet as well. Communications received expressing support for distance requirements for marijuana dispensaries.
That's received and filed.
Communication received from Linda Heemskirk in regards to East Town Streetlights.
That's received and filed.
And a communication from Michael Farage in regards to Kent County Health Department.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
Comptroller's report for the period of February 12, 2020 through March 4, 2020 in the amount of $29,030,9291.
That's received and filed.
Major Funds Monthly Reporting as of January 31, 2020.
That's received and filed.
And Treasurers' Report for the period of February 8, 2019 through February 28, 2020.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda and reports of standing committees. Can I get a motion?
Vote.
Support.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I have one comment I want to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, please. Yep, go ahead.
So, just a reminder, Committee of the Whole this morning, there was, we suspended the rules to add an item to cancel the March 31st meeting and then change anything that was supposed to be on the March 31st date to April 14. Those items have all been corrected and revised. So, but we did that as a suspended rules and approved, just like when we went into closed session, that motion was for that meeting and moving forward. So, that's an item that was taken up by this Commission this morning, just as a reminder.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. All right, any other questions or comments, Commissioner?
When I look at item number 14 under...
Oh, it still says March 31st.
It's still saying the March 31st. Though it should, because it's the rescheduling of the public hearing. So, to your point, city clerk, I wonder if that date should be changed?
Yeah, we'll make sure that's fixed.
Good aye, Commissioner. All right, anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to Committee of the Whole resolutions. We have two of those items to, well, no, that's under consent. So, that will take us to items removed from consent. And we have one item that was removed from consent. This is a resolution scheduling a public hearing in consideration of an objection to a waiver of the required separation distance from Dickinson, Bufford Park for a proposed medical marijuana facility at 1525 College Avenue Southeast. And this is a public, scheduling a public hearing that will be held on April 14th. Can I get a motion?
Sumo.
Vote.
All right, and Commissioner Connor, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, we, y'all voted to have a resolution to schedule a public hearing about an objection of waiver required for separation distance from a park. I, yeah, I voted against it because I don't think parks should be a sensitive use.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, it carries. Next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted. And we have two ordinances tonight. And first, I'll need suspend the rules to give immediate effect.
Immediate consideration.
Immediate consideration.
So, moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate consideration say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, rules are suspended. We'll start with the first resolution. This is a resolution providing for the immediate consideration, adoption, and effect of an amendment to Section 1.505, Chapter 11, Title 1 of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids and providing for the publication of the same. Can I get a motion?
Sumo.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Moody, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, ma'am. Attached for your consideration is an ordinance to amend Section 1.505, Chapter 11 of the city's code. This section is being amended to allow the city manager to approve the purchases up to 200,000 in the cases of emergencies from which previous his limit was 10,000. Such emergencies were within any day. Any delay in purchasing would possibly result in interruption or intermittent of the public.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments about that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. And can I get a motion to give it immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next, I need a motion to suspend the rules again to give immediate consideration. Can I get a motion?
Sumo.
Support.
All right, all those in favor of suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, rules are suspended. This is a resolution providing for the immediate consideration, adoption, and effect of a proposed ordinance to amend Section 7.379 of Chapter 105 called marijuana-related municipal licensing. So, it's just the licensing and providing the publication of the same. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor. The proposed amendment will defer the start date for accepting license applications until October 20, 2020. In the interim, medical marijuana businesses licensed by the state and approved as special land uses by the Planning Commission would be able to continue operating as medical marijuana establishments, as is the case under the existing ordinance. This amendment would not affect the status of medical marijuana special land use applications in the queue for consideration by the Planning Commission. A new licensing framework will be developed over the next six months and adjusted zoning ordinance amendments will be introduced. I do want to specify again that this is about licensing and not about land use.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments about this?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, I voted no against, again this morning on this. And I feel it's, we agreed to a process to have this completed by April 20th. Businesses made a decision whether or not they would probably pursue this and made financial commitments and decisions about pursuing adult use marijuana as a business opportunity in the city of Grand Rapids based upon a timeline that we had all agreed to. And in the 11th hour, it feels like we're, you know, we're Lucy pulling the football out from Charlie Brown right now, moving the goalpost. And given not only the difficulty and the capital requirements and the investments that folks have planned to make to pursue these ventures now, given even the changing global economic conditions, I think we're just, as government, putting further burden on businesses and folks trying to make an investment in our community. And I think that's wrong.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else who wishes to be heard? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
No.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
No.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. It carries. And can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All right, do I need roll call for that? Or, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
It carries.
I just want to, just so I cross my t's and dot my i's, I'm going to take a roll call vote on the first ordinance we did because we did it by a voice vote. I just want to make sure that we have our i's and t's crossed for that ordinance.
All right, so going back up to a roll call vote for the provision to increase the city manager's spending authority.
Yep, just to make sure we have that.
Okay.
All the different parts. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor? Commissioner Repart? Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Usasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
It carries, you're welcome. All right, and that will take us to our public comment period tonight. So, this is our last opportunity for public comment tonight. Same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. My name is David Davis. I live here in the downtown area. And there's a number of things I'd like to talk about tonight. Number one, I'm disappointed that somebody opened the Pandora's Box and we can't have the meeting where it was originally scheduled. I'd like to take a time or back to my childhood and visit that particular location. So, I hope it'll be rescheduled for that area. And just recently, like, there'll be two weeks tomorrow, we had a very traumatic incident at the Grand View Place where I live. The police and the fire department, the ambulance crews, the forensic department all have responded very, very well to this particular instance. Seeing I live in the same apartment complex as this took place, I want to commend the city people for doing their job on this virus bit. I hear a lot of things over the news and they all want to say the important, or what they want us to hear. But they don't tell us that there's other things that we can do as well. One thing is fresh air is one of the best ways to fight this bacteria. Get outside, walk for 30 minutes, maybe two, three times a day. Get that fresh air in your lungs, clean out your lungs. And that'll help you fight off this virus. As you all know, I ride a bike and take care of myself. And at my age, I'm in pretty good health. And I do this on a regular basis myself and I don't get sick. So, I would like for the city to get on the ball and advise people to get out and walk, get some fresh air and help fight off this bacteria so we can end this catastrophe we're undergoing right now. And I've been downtown and all around and I see that we don't have very much traffic. People are staying home, but I don't see people walking either. And this is one of the things they really need to do. If they can't walk, at least get outside and get some fresh air and that. So, this is some of the things that have been coming up. And it's been a long time since we had our last meeting and it's going to be a long time to the next one. So, we'll have to deal with those as they come. And I appreciate the efforts that the City Commission and our government is doing to help us out. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, others wish to be heard?
Watchdog Miller back. Two points just made. The, it would take about six bus trips to get out to Burton School on Buchanan. And I also support going to that neighborhood. But the rapidly, under whom, board whom you appoint, one third of them raised fares, doubled, cut fares from four, transferred from four rides to two. So, just trying to get out there and back, I think you might have to pay four fares to that particular location. But somewhere near there, but on the bus line and with a bus stop. And somebody should direct a city clerk's office to go down there on the buses before these meetings are scheduled, which wait. And also, if you've noticed, attendance is very scant. 95% of the city staff works very hard at those meetings. But attendance has always been scant over the year. I'm unaware of any other municipality where I have been involved where they say, well, we don't have to run city buses to City Hall because three times a year you go out to the neighborhoods, you know? It's much, much more important, if this program is continued, to get our city buses down here in first place, talking eight, nine Catholic routes and the six black routes, which are named every meeting. We also need coffee. And I'm going to go into, here's what, how we fought World War II. We see these huge coffee urns, places open all night. It's called Nighthawks, probably conceived in '41 with gathering war clouds, but officially from 1942. Please get our coffee houses back to work. This hysteria is destroying the local economy. And that affects your Treasurers' Reports, which we receive every two weeks. Going to C5, a walkway, that's the, remember the 40-story building that was supposed to go up? Chairman, I thought since he has the tallest building in Kalamazoo, he deserves the tallest building here. Well, it's a nasty two-story walkway. Every other walkway in that area, one goes, one is five stories high. Between another CWD, between the CWD Building and one of your lots, another walkways. So, that walkway there at 10 Ionia should be at least three stories high. And Historic Preservation Officer, we lost half of our veterans home because nobody, nobody really, those were historic buildings up there. And it was one awesome mural of the Ford family there and...
Mr. Miller, your time's up.
And this was Watchdog Miller reporting.
Your time is up. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment and I will turn to my colleagues and I'll start down here with Commissioner Usasi.
Thank you to the public for most, I think, those who came out, but those who are watching live. We've had a full day, lots of good briefings and updates. And I just want to say thank you to city staff and we'll see you all on April 14th.
Yeah, thank you. My thanks as well to the city manager and all that he's doing to care for our employees and set the tone for our city and the Kent County Health Department and our emergency management team that's monitoring the situation so closely and getting out information in a really calm, compassionate, and consistent way.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Nothing at this point, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take a moment to thank our city manager, Washington, and the entirety of the city staff, the tireless work that's been done ever since we were introduced to the presence of COVID-19 in our state and the work that has been done to not only keep us informed, but to keep the community informed. I again applaud the efforts. And I know that in many ways, we are very much in uncharted waters. And I just want to again commend all involved because what I see is very much an all-hands-on-deck approach. And I think it's to be commended because that's what's required right now. Also want to say thank you for helping us to provide or to be the example that we're trying to set with regards to the social distancing aspect of this and the way our setup is here in the commission chambers. And I too look forward to coming back together on the 14th for our next meeting. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's a strange drive back down here tonight to the neighborhoods on this beautiful St. Patrick's Day. The streets would normally be alive with people celebrating. You know, in Gaelic, we say cilancia, which means health, which is a little ironic today that we won't be able to, you know, cheers to good health unless you do it at home during your social distancing. But I think about, you know, all the small businesses and, and not just the businesses, but the employees, the service workers out there who aren't going to be sharing in your, you know, your purchases and your tips and your revelry tonight. And that's going to continue on here for some period of time. And so, as a small business owner who employs a lot of people who we had to lay off earlier this week, I ask you to think about, you know, as you spend your dollars, spending them locally, spending them with small businesses in Grand Rapids, not acting in a panic, but, but doing so to, to help all of those, all those people get by. And think about, you know, the service workers especially. There's a very significant amount of people right now who don't have customers and don't have a job and who are struggling to get through the state's unemployment system. And, you know, we thank the, thank the governor for her forward thinking on this and her, her reactions and doing some things to help ease the burden. But, you know, I had many of my employees reach out today about the system being overwhelmed and, and not being able to get through and get access to the resources they need in the interim here. So, just if you can, do what you, do what you can to help the people out that, that don't have access to an income right now.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, I'd like to support those comments. Commissioner O'Connor, I think, you know, we're experiencing uncharted territory. And I'm just appreciative of, of all people who have come together throughout this city, throughout the state, and even the nation to try and combat this COVID-19 in our nation and across the world. And I, you know, it's, it's interesting because every person will be impacted in some way, shape, or form. And this is a time for unity. And I'm happy that we are trying to do our best with communicating publicly about the options that exist and trying to get people the resources that they need. So, keep up the good work, those who are watching, those who have businesses, those who, you know, our city staff working on this, those who are continuing to provide services, those who don't know how they can make ends meet by the end of this week. You know, we just all need to continue to support one another and, and share the information we do have so that people can be aware of it. The other comment that I'd like to make is under the communications, communications items, 8 and 11. Mr. City Clerk, I think you mentioned that there were several items under 8 and you mentioned several under 11. I don't know if you have the exact count with you now. If you do, it would be great to hear those. And if not, if the minutes could reflect the exact number of those communications so that we'll know exactly how many people communicated and expressed those sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Clerk? Okay, city attorney? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your, your work in supporting a lot of the public policy that was decided today. And I too want to echo my appreciation for the city staff, many who have been working around the clock, monitoring and helping us with our internal decision-making and communications. And this is different. This is, this is kind of an invisible threat to our public health and safety, unlike some of the other weather incidents that we have managed. And so, we're very thankful that we have a full-time emergency operations coordinator helping to monitor the situation with multiple updates throughout the day. And that it has been a very cross-departmental effort in trying to strategize how we respond to it locally as well as partnering with Kent County, the Public Health Department, and even, even the liaisoning that we have done at the state level with our Legislative Affairs Office. So, I want to thank everyone involved in that. And I, even, even though this is, this is different than what we experienced before and somewhat daunting because it's just not national, it's international, I am, I am hopeful that we will be better on the way out than we are right now. And there are a lot of people who are already starting about collective economic recovery or infusion, knowing that we can't do it all at the local level. But I think this community is, is better than any that, that I have seen really comes together. And so, hopefully, we will, after, this is day number two. And I keep it, day number two. We've been in ice storms, or excuse me, snowstorms recovery for almost a couple of weeks. And it didn't shut our economy down. Our reaction here has been as if it's been the 20th day because of, because of the preventative measures that we're trying to, to ensure that, to mitigate the problem. But keep in mind, it's day number two. And when we came out of... And when we came out of, um, uh, the polar vortex, and it was almost two weeks, we were intentional about helping our local, uh, businesses to recover. I think what, what I have seen is, uh, there's not just been decisions made in the, the near couple of weeks, but we have seen people in terms of festivals in June and July start to cancel those at this point, and so I would just caution our community, um, to not think too far ahead in terms of our inability to do things publicly. Let's plan for what we know. Right now, uh, April the fifth is the date that we're working on, working towards, and hopefully we can, we can, um, have better information about the future of our community, and, uh, do some things very intentional to, to re-energize our, uh, economy. So, I'm looking forward to, uh, helping as much in recovery as we are in, in response.
Thank you, City Manager. And I'll end by, by echoing those comments, also weighing in and giving my thanks to the entire city team and everyone who's been working really around the clock this past week as we respond to this emergency. We can still support our small businesses, there are, um, some of our local businesses and restaurants who have stayed open to do takeout, which is allowed, so, if you have the ability to do that, please support them, uh, so that they can get through this hard time. Uh, and then also look for ways to partner and give back to the community and help those who are really, really struggling right now, whether that's by giving blood, as Commissioner Usasi said earlier, or, um, if you're healthy, volunteering to help deliver meals, there's a lot of people that can't get out of their homes because they're, they're medically vulnerable or they're older, uh, there are ways to give back and to help out right now, uh, if you can afford it, to, to give to a lot of the nonprofits who are working and working really hard to help people in this community. Uh, we're all in this together, and we're gonna get through it together, uh, and I agree with, uh, our city manager, we will work aggressively with our county, state, and federal partners to do everything we can for a quick, uh, recovery for everyone that's been impacted. Uh, and with that, we will adjourn, and we'll see you back here on April fourteenth.